There we go. Commissioner Bernhols, can you hear us? Okay. We're going to have to run through that again, unfortunately. I can run through, I'll run through it. We'll run through it very quickly. Apologies for the technical difficulty. We are now ready to begin the meeting. Welcome, everyone.
I have passed these on to President Stone already. I just wanted to call out a couple of more substantive notes. And that is, under the commissioners' reports, I just clarified the requirement of why we are meeting on Valentine's Day, of that 15-day difference with BOPAC meeting. And then I added a line about Vice President Giordano had indicated he was going to complete the, any report with revisions before leaving the commission. And then also, I had given a brief update on the redistricting initiative report, which, at the time, was almost complete. We were just incorporating the legal review from DCA Flores. Those are the main substantive comments. I did think it was a good idea. I had a couple of items under item eight, agenda items for future meetings. I think it's good when we actually have those discussions to noted in our minutes just for our own accountability. And we had talked about discussing the implementation of ballot labels, AB 1416, at a future meeting, since the Board of Supervisors waiver is only for one year. And also about sending a letter to appointing authorities, since the last meeting was when Commissioner Hayden Crowley had resigned. And we were hopeful that we were going to get a new commissioner, which we have, Commissioner Wong from the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Any other feedback on the meeting minutes? If you wouldn't mind, Wong, are you here?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Do I have general consensus that we can accept Commissioner Dai's feedback to the minutes?
Yes.
Wonderful. We will move forward with the proposed changes and move to public comment. Excuse me. Public comment on Agenda Item Number Three, approval of previous meeting minutes specifically pertaining to the Wednesday, January 17, 2024, regular meeting of the Elections Commission.
No public commenters.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. That will close out Agenda Item Number Three. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Four, the Director's Report. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Director's Report for February 14, 2024. With that, I will hand it to Director Arns.
Thank you, President Stone. I can take questions on the report, but a few items. So right now, the turnout for this election, we've received 15,000 vote by mail ballots, and, which means that the turnout is light when you're, in relation to, we have 500,000 registered or so voters in San Francisco. But at the same time, this turnout is tracking the November, the March 2020 turnout. And the overall turnout for that election was around 63%. So even though it's light now, this is, the trend is matching what we see in primaries generally, where the activity happens more towards Election Day than in the beginning of the cycle. So things will be picking up in the weeks to come. Then, on the Director's Report, I think one topic to bring up would be the proposed amendments to the Municipal Elections Code that I'll put forward. And I mentioned this at the last meeting, I think. And essentially, the proposed amendments are in response to the Board's resolution, essentially setting a policy for the Department to incorporate a state law that candidates demonstrate a use of a Chinese-character-based name for two years prior to filing nomination papers. So the amendments that I've put in here match that policy that the Board put forward. And then I've inserted the subsection from California Elections Code, Section 13211.7, Subsection B, into Municipal Election Code, Section 401. And I made the subsection B in 13211.7, Subsection B in Section 401 of the MEC. Then also, the amendments, I included the two declarations that we, that the Department developed during the nomination process for the March, for this upcoming March primary election. And there, there was concern that people who were given a Chinese-character-based name at birth, but who are unable to provide documentation substantiating the, the use of that name, or that they were given that name, would be unable to have their Chinese-character-based names appear on the ballot. So we created two declarations. We did pass these by the Secretary's Office. The one declaration provided someone, a family member, to attest that the candidate was given a character-based name, Chinese-character-based name. And the second declaration allowed the candidate to attest that they had no family member that could sign the declaration, and that the candidate had no documentation, just to substantiate the candidate being given the name at birth. So this has not been provided to the Board at this point, but this is the proposed amendments that I'll be putting forward. And also, the Secretary's Office has not yet commented on this language. I drafted this language, so there might be some changes. But as far as the intent of the amendments, this is what the intent will show in the document that we provide to the Board of Supervisors. And the reason I'm providing this information to the Commission now, prior to submitting to the Board, is I indicated in my conversations with President Stone, that when the Department submitted any sort of amendments to the MEC, or proposed new law, that we would, the Department would provide notice to the, to the Commission, at least, the, the meeting prior, at least, before we submitted such amendments. So that's the purpose of providing this text in my Director's Report for this meeting. And from there, I can take any questions, so.
Thank you, Director Arns. Let's also make sure that we, oh, no, the next agenda item will be on the budget. I apologize. We can take any. I will start looking for hands and start calling in folks in order. Yes, Commissioner Bernhols.
Thank you, President Stone, and thank you, Director Arns. A couple of questions about the Section 3C, where you go into the Department's efforts to mitigate AI and misinformation. Can you just tell me what the source of these approaches was? Did you draw these from some recommendations somewhere? Or did the Department generate these proposed actions to mitigate the effects of AI on misinformation?
All of the above. So Supervisor Preston has called for a hearing on February 29th for the Department of Elections and the Ethics Commission to report on artificial intelligence in the upcoming March election. And so there wasn't really a, like a broad ask, but for us to report. So we basically considered the question of, of artificial intelligence in relation to the, the conduct of elections, because that's our area. And we did look to other sources, other agencies, also the Secretary of State's Office, the recommendations and guidelines. And then we, we conjoined those recommendations and guidelines with our current practices around election security and voting system security. And so we were just really building out on what we have around election security to include being cognizant and potentially responsive to any sort of artificial intelligence, the effects of artificial intelligence in the local election process. And a lot of what we would do would be in response to any sort of impacts on registration and the actual conduct of the election. We wouldn't, we really don't monitor or track any sort of campaign speech. It's not something that we're authorized to do, or are capable of doing or enforcing. But if there was any sort of messaging that happened around registration and the conduct of the election, like actually voting, then we would, we're thinking, well, what, what sort of response, what sort of measures, preventive measures, and also responsive measures could be put in place as we go through this process? And then also, certainly as we go into the November election cycle.
And it's, the way these responses are set out here, it focuses on AI and information. Is, was Supervisor Preston's request focused on social media and misinformation, as AI is at the primary area where he sees it being potentially disruptive? Or are you omitting from this public record other protective measures about AI and attacks on internet-connected systems, or things that aren't just about the information, but about the actual functioning of the equipment? Or even the organizing and location of, well, that's obviously information, but other aspects of your responsibilities? Is that just buried in this link to election security? Or is this really, the misinformation is where the primary focus is going to be, and there isn't a focus elsewhere?
Well, as far as the hearing is concerned, my understanding is Supervisor Preston wanted the Department to indicate how, how it would respond to any sort of impacts by artificial intelligence on the elections process. And we indicated that, you know, again, that we don't really track campaign speech. We're not, that's not what we do. We're not authorized to do that. So any sort of misinformation tracking we would do would be, again, around registration and voting, and the elections process, like, you know, like votes being counted, things like that. And as far as the impact of, potential impacts of artificial intelligence on the, any, the systems, internet, or whatever, that is, it's not buried. It's, it's a part of our election security measures that we've, we've really already implemented and use. And we're also, but now we're also bringing in any aspects of artificial intelligence that, you know, potentially have new threats in relation to other threats that have existed prior to, to today.
And are you getting support from, is the Secretary of State providing ongoing support to the jurisdictions about potential threats and types of concerns? And is part one of my final question, part two is, are there other resources? Would you be interested in receiving other resources, since I'm surrounded by the research community that's quite hard at work on identifying potential implications here?
Yes, yes to both questions. So the Secretary of State's Office does provide updates and guidelines to the counties. And the Secretary of State's Office has a, has a new department, the Cyber Security Office, that was, is, I think newly formed prior to the 2022 elections, maybe the 2020, I don't remember. And so that office actually is, is directed to monitor any potential harms to the elections process and voting via cyber mechanisms, cyber-related mechanisms. And that office issues updates, like, every, every week, I think it is, any, any sort of news, any sort of happenings, any sort of concerns that are, that are occurring in the, in the elections world. We also get information from other agencies as well. There's CISA, we receive information, the FBI, Homeland Security. So, but if you have other sources, certainly, I mean, we're interested in which you could send to us.
I'd be happy to take that on and, and provide it directly to you, as well as to the Commission. Thank you, Director Arns.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Bernhols. And I do want to add, Director Arns, that in the commissioners' reports, we've also added an article from, that Commissioner Bernhols requested to have added to the packet, and that is less so. I mean, it does touch a little bit on cybersecurity, but it's also on physical security and physical infrastructure, equipment, people, security. And so I know we'll be talking also a little bit more about that and questions, perhaps, around threats that would be more tangentially related, less so around AI. So just to prime everyone about that conversation as well. Any other commissioners would like to take a swing at the Director's Report? Commissioner Dai.
Thank you for your report, Director Arns. I particularly enjoyed the social media videos, decent response, so I think that's fabulous. Thanks again for moving ahead on the amendments to the Municipal Elections Code. I did have a question about one of the forms. It required traditional Chinese characters only, and I was just wondering why.
So all of our materials are in traditional Chinese characters, and that's, matches more the, the, how the, more people in San Francisco consume information versus simplified characters.
Okay. So it's not an issue of not being able to accept it in our systems, or, or anything?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Any other comments? I just had one comment pertaining to information around, I don't, I guess, AI is a concern, deep fakes are a concern, and I hear you on not monitoring what campaigns are saying. One thing that has come up, I believe, either in our commission meetings or in conversations privately, is my concern around the public education of the length of time that it takes to report on the election and the results. And we've talked about this as a result of the, how the results are actually listed on the website, but also in the context of how maybe the public won't recognize that it takes time to fully process these ballots. And in the conversation that we had in our last meeting pertaining to potentially getting to a six-card ballot, that takes time, particularly when the majority of our voters are voting by mail. And so I'm wondering if there, if there is, and I'm sure you've already kind of thought about this, but if, perhaps also you could talk about it down the line. I'm thinking more about November, not so much March, but making sure folks are preemptively aware that it is going to take, you know, that Election Day is not a day anymore, it is a week. It will take time to process all of the ballots, and making sure the public is aware of that. And I think the earlier that the public is primed about concerns with not making decisions about elections being called too early, before the Department has made those calls, is valuable. And so I would love to hear, doesn't have to be today, but down the line, if there is a plan for that preemptive public education around the length of time for results reporting, so that the public is primed and aware and ready, and isn't going to be as susceptible to being influenced by misinformation or even disinformation.
Every election, we, we provide information, we issue press releases. I'm available to the media readily after Election Day. And it's clear in our, in our messaging that the, the canvassing of the election will occur for several weeks after Election Day. If we go to, and I, we've been through it before, it's not, this is not anything new to us. If we go to a six-card or more ballot, it's a presidential turnout, that just increases the, the length of time. And we'll put more messaging around it. And so, but we do every election, and we will, we, already on our website, we, we have information on the, on the, on the process, on the timeframe. As we go into Election Day, we'll issue press releases, and then we can do social media as well. And I don't think, well, it might be because of central committee contests, there might be some, some close counts, but, but yeah, November, if it's, even if it's a five-card ballot, I mean, we've, we've experienced five-card ballots in presidential cycles before, and you have supervisors' contests as well. So certainly, we, we do messaging, we'll do more messaging, and we're well aware of it, so we'll continue.
Yes, thank you. And that is not, that wasn't to say that there was an absence of it in the past. It's just the notion that there are already deep fakes out there, and folks, and the fears around, perhaps, maybe not in San Francisco, it can always happen in San Francisco, people not conceding, and things of that kind, just making sure people are patient with the, or as patient as they can be with the outcome of the, of the results. So thank you for that. I also just wanted to say thank you for all of the efforts around registration. I was excited to see some of the, I, I was excited to see the uptick in registrations. I thought that was actually a pretty phenomenal number, so thank you. And also to see it spread across the district, so really thank you for that. It's a huge, clearly a huge effort from the Department, and also aligning with the Commission's priorities, which we, I, I think needs to be addressed. So I thank you, and I look forward to hearing about the, the February 29th meeting. Is it a meeting? Is it a hearing? Is it a report that you have to provide, or something?
It's a hearing, I guess.
Okay. Well, it sounds very flashy, so I will be interested to, to hear about it and kind of see, see what comes out of that. And also, like I said, I would like to talk a little bit more about the physical threats in the commissioners' reports as well, but curious to hear about the AI on the 29th. Any other questions for the Director? Okay. Let's move to public comment. We're now on public comment for Agenda Item Number Four, the Director's Report for February 14, 2024. No hands raised. Thank you, Secretary Davis. That closes out Agenda Item Number Four. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Reports. Discussion and Possible Action in Commissioners Reports for topics not covered by another item on this agenda: meetings with public officials, oversight and observation activities, long-range planning for commission activities in areas of study, proposed legislations which affect elections, and others. And we'll open it up. Yes, Commissioner Dai, and then Commissioner Bernhols.
So I just wanted to update the Commission that, finally, our redistricting initiative report is complete and ready to go to the Board of Supervisors. So President Stone is going to take care of that after this meeting. And then we will post the final version of the report on the website, on the Fierce page. Is that where we'll do it?
Potentially, or even closer to the homepage, we will find, we will, it will be on the website easily and readily available.
We will find an appropriate place for it. It will probably take us about a week to, to get it up on the website, but it is done, and has included all of DCA Flores' legal review, and all of the comments from commissioners at our December meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Commissioner Bernhols.
Thank you, President Stone. Congratulations, Commissioner Dai. That's, that's a milestone. I wanted to just be briefly to the article that I had included in the package today. I think it's important on this Commission to make sure that we are able to assure the public that steps are being taken to make sure that they can vote safely. I know that discussing the Department's protective, preventive actions is slightly problematic, but I do think we will want to be prepared over the course of the year to be able to speak confidently about security measures that are in place. I will, just jumping ahead a little bit, was believe to see that there was not a significant budget decrease for security, physical security for the elections, even though the budget has to go down. And I hope we can work with the Department to figure out how we can help them reassure the public that they will be able to cast their vote safely. One other thing, which I should have said upfront, I do want to just comment that Commissioner Giordano, in what I thought was, did speak to my class at Stanford. I thought he had, his term had ended before he took on I thought he had, his term had ended before he took on that engagement. It may not have, and so there may be floating around some back-channel information about whether or not that was a legitimate undertaking on his part. He was a very impressive speaker to the class. The students loved him. He spoke about open-source software, and I hope that that is not problematic. I hope I didn't put him into a difficult position, but I believe he's now transitioned off, so that's out of, hopefully that's not an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernhols. And I appreciate you raising the Washington Post article and just the fiscal threats. I will add to that my concern for the employees of the department as well, poll workers, the full-time employees, the warehouse staff, and also the security of the facilities themselves, the integrity of also the ballots. So all of the above. There are a few points that I wanted to add on top of that, that I just wanted to call out because I have spoken with the director about this numerous times, actually, and I shared this with Commissioner Bernhols as well, that actually back in 2022, ahead of the midterm election, following the attack on Paul Pelosi, I personally had pretty significant concerns about the safety of not just voters, but the folks working in the department and trying to facilitate and administer the midterm election in '22. And so I actually spoke with the director about what the plans were, and to surprise of no one, the director had actually already coordinated a pretty great effort with the mayor's office and, I believe, the FBI and sheriff and some other coordinated, I think, the district attorney's office, though I won't go deeper into all of that and won't ask the director to in public setting. But the idea to say that there's a lot of work that is done with the department and through the support of other elected offices in the city to protect the vote, protect, protect poll workers and the staff, and protect voters. One of the other things that the, I was really excited to see in '22 that the department implemented through some of those discussions was de-escalation training as well. So poll workers were, I believe, are, continue to be trained in de-escalation training so that we can continue to have, you know, safe environments for all different types of folks to show up and vote without fear or threat. And I really appreciated the director's openness to that idea. I think it must, yeah, it must have been right ahead of the midterms. A couple other things I just wanted to mention, because I had, I'd raised those concerns again, leading up to November, is the director had mentioned in, I guess that was December or November, about an issue that was happening in jurisdictions, not, I don't believe in California. I think it was mostly in Oregon, maybe Oregon and Washington, where fentanyl was sent in the mail to elections offices. And I had asked the, and it was pretty actually scary for those offices. If you've read a little bit about it, you know, like full hazmat suits teams showing up to elections offices where, you know, election people, staff were just trying to do their jobs and had to be concerned about mysterious mail. And so I had actually raised this with the director as well. And unsurprisingly, again, the department is already well-prepared, has worked with the Department of Public Health, I believe, and has signage up in the offices pertaining to suspicious mail. There's a plan with the post office, I believe, about how to deal with that. And then also, I believe, folks in the department are trained on Narcan as well. And so there is so much work that goes on behind the scenes that I wanted to shout out the department for doing. And two other points I wanted to make before I'll hand it over also to the director to see if there are other things, A, that I got wrong, or B, that he wants to add. One, folks may have mentioned that, or may have noticed that in a previous director's report, there was also a mention of HAVA security grants. So I specifically asked the director about that, I believe, a few weeks ago in the same conversation around fentanyl. I believe, I don't know if we received that grant funding, but I do know that that was a preemptive measure that the department was taking to try and have our, the warehouse and our, the physical infrastructure protected ahead of March and November. And then the other thing that we might consider discussing at some point, if, if it's of interest to the department and the commission, is there is this organization called the Committee for Safe and Secure Elections, and they are a joint effort of a bunch, a bunch of kind of pro-democracy national organizations that work with local elections officials across the country to do training and preparedness planning and scenario planning for free around threats to physical safety, so moving away from cyber and anything like that. But, you know, how to coordinate, how to coordinate with the appropriate departments in the chance of a threat. So that might be something I've actually, I know a couple of folks there who are excellent. And so if that is of interest, to do some just free scenario planning, that's also a resource that I would like to extend. So I just appreciate everyone listening through my remarks. And Director Arns, I'll hand it to you. Did I get anything wrong you would like to correct or add to what I shared and also what Commissioner Bernhols has shared?
No, good memory.
Tried.
And, no, you hit it. And the, I did submit the legislation to, for the board to prove the grants. I got it back. I have to make some, some changes, have to fill some forms out. I haven't done that yet. But we still have continued with the work installing key card locks in the department, mechanisms that indicate if a door's been opened in the department that we can track. And then also at the warehouse, we've been installing some extra measures as well. So that, that's ongoing. So right now, I think the fentanyl issues, fentanyl-related issues show this. As much as there's concern about the cybersecurity, there has been for a while. I mean, and, you know, in the voting system, security, really, and I appreciate you bringing this up, President Stone, is the physical, the physical security that's, that's of primary concern, I think, gets too little attention until, until it becomes an issue for other jurisdictions. So I appreciate you bringing this up. And we've been certainly taking steps ourselves for our own security, and we'll continue to do so. I'm interested in this information you have from this group, certainly. Yeah, and then we'll just go from there.
Thank you, Director Arns. And then also, one thing I wanted to mention to the new Commissioner, Kelly, excuse me, Commissioner Wong, that one of the, one of the post-election reports that the director provides are incident reports as well. So we, there's a lot of transparency into anything that also happens in our poll sites so that we can also be evaluating, you know, if anything came up that was particularly of concern. But what is amazing is that the department is so well-planned for these types of incidents that the incidents tend to be like a pen broke, or, you know, like, you know, something very minimal, which is the ideal, right? That is the ideal. If things don't go wrong, that is, you know, if there isn't a headline about it, that means things are going well. That's, so I wanted to add that. Thank you, Director Arns. Thank you, Commissioner Bernhols. I think we should continue to talk about these issues. And I also think it will become a, continue to be a national conversation. I've seen a ton of, a ton of press on this in the last two weeks alone. So I probably will also want to continue to raise it. Any other commissioner reports to share? Let's move to public comment. We are moving to public comment on Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Reports.
There are no public commenters.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. That closes out Agenda Item Number Five. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Six, Department of Elections, FY '24, '25, and FY '25, '26 Budget Review. Discussion and Possible Action on the Department of Elections' Annual Budget as prepared by the Director of Elections, John Arns. The Elections Commission is required to conduct two reviews of the department's budget no less than 15 days apart. This is the second review. The Commission's Standing Budget and Oversight Committee conducted its initial budget review on Monday, January 29th, 2024. With that, I will hand it, Director Arns, did you have anything you wanted to mention before we go into the discussion about the budget? It's okay.
Yeah, not really.
Okay, the memo is pretty thorough.
Okay.
Okay. I will open it up to commissioners then. Commissioner Dai.
Yeah, I was wondering if there was anything that you wanted to provide as a summary from the BOPAC meeting?
Myself? No. I don't think so. We reviewed the budget. We, yeah, no, I don't think I have a summary to share. I don't think I was prepared for a summary, so apologies.
I can, just, just for, so the mayor's office is requesting that all departments cut by 10%, which going into presidential cycle with potentially the most cards in the history, it's impossible for us to cut, really cut our budget to 10%. So we did look for efficiencies in the budget, and we did find, I think, $283,000 of reductions. And it's not necessarily cuts, it's reliance on the general fund. And so it's, so when people, when you read it in the media, it's always they got to cut their budget. Well, not necessarily a cut of the budgets, it's a reduction of reliance from the general fund to administer the department. So we've reduced our reliance on the general fund by 588,583, I think it is, for the next fiscal year. And the $300,000 of that is from revenue that will be coming in from the district elections that will, that will conduct mostly for the school district and community college. Then for fiscal year plus one in '26, our reduction is, what, 513, I think it is? I don't, and we have less revenue coming in. And we will continue to have the same, we'll have ongoing general fund reductions into '26 that we had in, for the '24, '25 budget. And so, and also what was changed for the '26 budget, if I'm being that right, is the, the June primary in '26 will require less staffing than will the November 2024 presidential election. So we're showing that as a, as a reduction in our reliance on the general fund. So overall, we're showing a reduction of reliance of 580, 658 for '24, '25, and then 513, 685 for '25, '26. And, and you look at the forms, I think it's on page three of the forms we provided the commission, Form 1B, it was like a high-level indication of our budget submission in relation to our base budget. Our base budget is what our budget was last for the current fiscal year. The mayor's office, or the budget system just moves the base budget forward in time. And that's always the marker that the, the future fiscal years are compared against. And you'll see down at the bottom of the page in red, target not met. The target that was set by the mayor's office for the department elections, which, by the way, was less than 10%, I want to say that. We're short for the next fiscal year by 90, 99? And then following fiscal year by, by 166. Since the BOPAC meeting, we've, the mayor's office has not requested that we find additional reductions in our general fund reliance. And so next week after this, if, hopefully the commission approves this budget proposal, the next week, we'll enter this into the city's budget system. And then potentially then, there'd be further discussion with the mayor's office on the budget. And then the next step would be that the board's legislative analyst's office will review our, our budget along with all other departments' budgets, and they'll seek cuts likely as well for various reasons. So this, the mayor's office has not touched the budget since BOPAC. Potentially, they could come back and ask for more reductions, but they have not signaled that yet. And after we enter this into the budget system, then the board's legislative analyst's office potentially will ask for, receive cuts from this budget. So this is the department's budget that we think we need for the next two fiscal years, and we'll stand by it, and we'll kind of take the conversations as they come in the next two points of conversation with the mayor's office potentially, and then certainly with the BLA's office, so.
Thank you, Director Arns. And also, Commissioner Dai, I went back and looked at my notes, so I can, I feel like I've lived nine lives in these two weeks, so I honestly, I couldn't even remember where I sat, so I had to go back and look at my notes. There were two things that we did talk about in addition to what the, what Director Arns said. Also, I'm glad to hear that the mayor's office has maintained the budget. I think that's excellent and necessary. Our elections need to be funded fully. And the two things that we did specifically spend a fair amount of time on was around ballot labeling, AB 1416. And I can share a little bit more insight into that. There is no update at this point. I haven't, I haven't spoken with the director about this offline. A few other things he's probably working on as well, namely about election. But the specific concern around moving to a six-card ballot, what that would mean for the department is obviously in his memo. And so making sure that, one of the concerns I had around the memo was the move between five, what would happen at five cards versus six cards versus seven cards. And offline, I had, the director and I had collaborated around how we could possibly stay opted into AB 1416 so that somehow we could include those ballot labels. And where we landed was really, if they depart, already six cards is too many, but beyond six is just not possible. And so the discussion was, is there a way to get creative where there is, we are, remain opted in for the November, for AB 1416 and for November, but potentially have some sort of, and correct me if I'm using the wrong term here, trailing legislation or not trailing, not trailing legislation that would allow the director to potentially, at the last minute, if we are reaching that seven-card ballot threshold, opt out of AB 1416? And if we are to reach that point, how do we make sure that the public is informed and that the commission has an opportunity to weigh in on that? And so we actually worked backwards from when the information, when he might have the knowledge of how many cards we'd be reaching on the ballot and when it would need to go to print, et cetera. And so the proposal is that around August 21st, the commission, basically E88 to E70, the director would notify the commission about the number of cards anticipated that we'd be reaching to and if he needs to trigger an opt-out of AB 1416. And then it would give the commission basically, what, two weeks, a week? I don't, I don't know where it is, very short amount of time, a week, to discuss and, and if they choose, if we choose. And so that is where we landed. There is no update, but I did want to share that that was talked about quite extensively. You also can watch the conversation on, it is up on YouTube if folks want to, to know more. And then Commissioner Giordanik was on the, was on the, was on BOPAC prior to the transition off, his transition off the commission, and he specifically asked questions around the translation services that we offer, the purchase order versus sole source. And I believe there may have even been a conversation about, yeah, no, that's it. So just wanted to give a quick recap, and I can also answer more questions about AB 1416, but there really isn't much more to, to share at this point. And I know that this is a, a follow-up that needs to happen as well. So, yeah. Commissioner Dai, I'll hand it back to you. I feel like you didn't have a chance to ask questions.
Yeah, I wanted to hear the summary first. So I had a, a couple of questions. So you have a section on possible solutions, and you mentioned going to a monolingual ballot format. Have, have, have you considered having kind of like a reference card in English? Have, have, have you considered having kind of like a reference card in English? I know we have many versions of the ballot and that's part of the challenge, but like, you know, a bunch of reference cards that are laminated that, you know, voters can have their monolingual ballot and then take an English reference card if they want to compare.
We haven't got that far. And really, a monolingual ballot, I don't know if we can do it because I mentioned at BOPAC, I think it was in the, I think in the 90s, when the city entered a consent decree with the DOJ. And that's when the city was, first began developing election materials in Chinese in addition to English. And I think probably Spanish at that time too, but I know for a fact Chinese. And one other requirement of the consent decree, of course, the consent decree is expired at this point. It's not, it's not really effective, but I think the spirit of the consent decree continues because we, we met with DOJ really for many years, even after the consent decree wasn't really in place, in my opinion. And we still had to provide information regarding our bilingual assistance at the polling places, materials that we're creating in languages other than English. So I, I don't, I don't think that having a monolingual ballot, that's not an option. And if it, if it were to become an option because, because of physical realities of the number of cards or whatever, then yeah, that's where we have to think about the, you know, with any sort of mitigations and support we could provide to voters in relation. But we put that in there really, I wouldn't say for shock value, but just to show what the alternatives are. But having a monolingual ballot is not something that we're actively planning for or expecting to happen.
This is President Stone. If you don't mind, I also would like to add what the discussion of BOPAC was in that as well, which was a, because that did come up, I believe Commissioner Giordanik also proposed that. And I will speak candidly that I strongly disagree with a monolingual ballot. And I think partially, there are a couple of pieces of that, some of what the director had spoken to, but also, you know, we're basically trading off that, we're exchanging the idea of the ballot, the transparency around who's financing the ballot measures for language access. And I don't think that is an appropriate trade-off, when particularly knowing that we have the Larnish, or just Chinese-speaking community outside of China in the city. So I, that, I just wanted to add that as well, that we did have that pretty strong debate on the commission and I think landed in the same place, excuse me, on BOPAC. The other thing we did mention, again, I wasn't prepared to make these comments, so now it's free-flowing here. The other thing I wanted to mention was the alternative discussed was shrinking the font size of the, yeah, of the, of the labels. And in fact, I believe another county, it may have been Contra Costa, and I mentioned this during BOPAC, did a mock-up of that. And they ultimately, it was so terrible that they, it wasn't a good alternative. So I did also want to add that. I apologize for interrupting, but I thought it was necessary to clarify.
Thank you, President Stone. The other question I had is, you know, there, there has been a lot of coverage recently about the turn, the letter that the SFUSD got about moving from at-large elections to potentially to, to district elections. And I, I know that they've, are exploring alternatives right now, which of course ranked choice voting is one of them. And I'm curious if, whatever they end up deciding, will that impact, how it will impact the, the Elections Department?
I don't know, really, at this point. And I'm not, I'm not being flip, I, they voted yesterday not to move to district elections for, or to partition the district into smaller districts, I guess. I don't know how else you'd say it. For November, and I don't know, but that, but that's something that the department really isn't a part of those conversations, we're not a part of that process. Our role at this point is to answer any questions that come our way. And so, and provide information where we can. And the one bit of information that we provided is that, you know, if they were to draw districts, there's unlikely that we could receive districts in time to make the changes on our side if the school district didn't follow current precinct boundaries. So if they essentially did, drew their own lines and we had to re-precinct the city essentially, there, there probably would not be enough time for us to create those districts to run their election in November. And there actually is a code section in the State Elections Code that would allow us to sidestep running their election if it came down to, if we couldn't run their election because the precincts weren't the same. So no one wants that. I did see the article in the Chronicle today about potentially using ranked choice voting. It's a multi-seat contest, so our ranked choice voting determines the, a, a, one candidate who received the most votes. So, you know, that's, that's something that we've not done before and it's not anything I can really answer at, at this time or even, I don't even want, I don't want to speculate because then I'm talking about a system that we haven't used in that way and I don't want to provide that information. So right now, it's, just to summarize, well, we're answering questions, providing information where we can. We don't, we're not a participant in their, their steps towards responding to the situation. But there certainly is a very small amount of time for any changes in just, in both the school, the Board of Education District and also the Community College District, if the Department of Elections will consolidate their election in our November planning, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, really, my question was about whether our current software vendors ranked choice voting is flexible enough to handle essentially multi-member situations because ranked choice voting can solve the problem that the California Voting Rights Act is trying to address without having to have districts. And we have plenty of experience with ranked choice voting in San Francisco. It would just be implemented with, you know, multiple members instead. And so that's, that's a question, is whether the Dominion software can handle that or not. Because if it can, that would certainly be easier than trying to draw new districts and figure that out. So this is, you know, this was a comment that we made in the redistricting initiative report, that that was something that we did not look at. We did not look at anything but single-member district elections because that's what we have right now and we didn't want to, you know, get crazy in our scope. But that's why we had a section in our final report indicating that there are other kinds of voting methods. And it's something that the original Elections Task Force, you know, looked at 30 years ago. That proportional ranked choice voting was, was a solution rather than going to districts and multi-member districts is another solution. So, so yeah, I, I'm just curious and it might be something to, to ask the representatives at Dominion, whether the, our implementation of ranked choice voting, our implementation of the software would allow for these other versions of ranked choice voting that we just happen to have not used before in San Francisco. But I wonder if they've, you know, implemented it as possible, we just have to reconfigure it. I think it's a good thing to prepare for because that might be the direction they're going in because it would certainly simplify a lot of things. And then thank you for answering the question on the precincts because the other thing I was just concerned about is, once they make their decision, they hand stuff over to the Elections Department, then you guys have to actually make sure you can accommodate the request. And I was worried about that timeframe and it sounds like it would be difficult unless they align to certain constraints. And then I guess the other, just other comments, you know, as usual, we can see that there, there are a lot of, not a lot of things we can move in this budget. You can understand why the Elections Commission's been focused on open source for so many years because our, you know, voting system is a big chunk of the budget. And as you noted, we don't have a choice right now. There are no alternatives that are open source. And then the other chunk that, you know, that we don't have a lot of control over is printing. And so just for the public who's trying to interpret this budget, and then many of the sole source contracts, as we discussed last year during the same budget process, limited choices, again, that based on the systems that we've chosen, that there are limited choices and who can support those systems. And so that is the reason for a lot of these sole source contracts, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Do other commissioners have questions or comments about the budget? Long silence, just making sure. Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve the Department of Elections FY 2425, 2526 Budgets.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Dai. Before we move to a vote, let's move to public comment on agenda item number six, Department of Elections FY 2425, FY 2526 Budget Review.
No public commenters.
Are any last comments from commissioners before we move to a roll call vote? Okay. Secretary Davis, will you please do the roll call?
President Stone?
Yes.
Vice President Parker, not here. Commissioner Bernhols?
Yes.
Commissioner Dai?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavulsi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Okay, with these members present and accounted for, this motion is passed.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. And thank you, Director Arns, for your work and hope it is a smooth process with the mayor's office going forward. All right, that closes agenda item number six. We'll now move to agenda item number seven, agenda items for future meetings. Discussion and possible action regarding items for future agendas. Any commissioners? Nothing, Commissioner Dai? I saw your finger like inching.
Well, you know, I don't, I don't know where the SFUSD is going to go with this, but I mean, it might be something that we, we should monitor. And I think by the next meeting, we'll have some information from that to like understand what the implications are.
I know that you and Commissioner, Vice President Parker probably want to be rid of redistricting, however, knowing that this is kind of your passion area and also as the appointee of the school board, perhaps you both can stay on it and keep us surprised of all of that.
Yes.
Great. There are a couple of things I just wanted to mention that is my to-do also to follow the director about AB 1416. But then one thing that Secretary Davis made me aware of is that we may need to adjust our meeting schedule already for the summer. So I believe that we're on a, one of our meetings is on a holiday. So just want to give everyone a heads up that we will need to be discussing that at some point, that the June and July. I remember Commissioner Hayden Crowley was always pushing me to get ahead of these things as far in ahead as possible. And so though it may be February, these things, people do plan their schedules and I want to be respectful of that. So just keep an eye out. So if you're thinking of traveling during June, July, just take note that we may need to adjust the meeting and we'll, we'll work to discuss that in an upcoming meeting. But that's it for me. Anything else? Let's move to public comment on agenda item number seven, agenda items for future meetings.
No public commenters.
Thank you, Secretary Davis. That closes out agenda item number seven. And we are, the time is now 7:13 PM and this meeting is adjourned.
Woo-hoo.